Jim, you want to start a prayer?
You want to start a prayer?
Yep.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening in the name of your name. We thank you so much for this wonderful, beautiful place we work. We ask that you be with those that work with us and work for us and just keep them safe. Be with us tonight and make these decisions that affect us all. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Sandy?
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
Darla Brown. Oh.
Dear. She's here. Okay, we're opening this with a public hearing to consider the additional appropriation of the bonds of the town of Ellisville not to exceed $1.5 million for the construction of a new maintenance facility. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak to that? Okay. Moving on. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, November 13th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Scott.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
From State, wasn't here.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Actions to Pay Accounts, payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have ordinances on first reading. And the first ordinance is 2023-16 appropriating the proceeds of the general obligation bonds of 2023.
And William, you can go ahead and move that to second reading because this was the ordinance that the council will recall was on the agenda for the last meeting. The notice of the hearing was placed in the paper, but the council tabled the public hearing portion to this meeting, so it is actually an ordinance on second reading.
Okay.
No, you can just, it's ordinance on second reading, so, yes, thank you.
Okay. So we don't need to do this, all right?
Nope, you don't need that.
So then we'll go to the next, the actual ordinance, 2023-17, increase in connection charges for the use of and services rendered by the sewage works system of the town of Ellisville, Indiana. Is that you, Jeff, or Mike?
Okay, yeah, so the utilities department suggests that we move our connection fee from $2,500 to $3,600. This will mirror the Eastern Insurance Sewer Corporation's hook-on fee. It was an agreement we had, oh, it's been at least a year ago, and they raised their fee. This fee only affects new build, and so anyone that currently is part of the sewer system and pays a bill right there, it's not affecting them. We just did asset management for the utilities through Westler Engineering, and I think we have approximately $18 to $20 million worth of asset. They're all depreciating. Way out, this plant is 27 or 28 years old. And so we got a pretty good idea of where we stand as far as what's coming our way in the future for upgrades, maintenance, replacement, someday even, you know, either add-on to the sewer plant, et cetera. So do you think this is appropriate to move to $3,600? I'm sure it's as high as it needs to be, but under the circumstances, we feel like it would be.
Okay. Council discussion.
And at the next meeting, there will be a public hearing on this, which is required by statute.
Okay. Any public comment on this? I'll just say, Mike, that, you know, things like, I understand the state and it's pretty much accepted that they're considered assets, but in a sense, we almost have to look at these things as liabilities because they have to constantly be maintained. I mean, we can't sell them. So I think that, again, I'm not questioning any of your numbers, it's just that we have to make sure we get these connection fees and all these right so we can do what we need to do with them in the future, just like you said, so.
I would point out that connection fee protects existing customers from the new builds. It takes capacity away from the sewer plant. Everybody that's ever hooked on has paid a hook-on fee, and it goes directly to capacity. And so through I-N-I reduction and sewer line replacements and then just getting down to the brass tacks and buying new equipment for the sewer plant, this helps, this helps that and does protect the existing customers, so.
All right, thank you. All right. Ordinance 2023-18, fixing of salaries for budget year 2024. Is that you, Sandy?
Well, that's the salary ordinance, so that's the wages for all of next year, and they're all listed there, so it went out last Friday. Do you have any questions on the panel?
I did not.
I did not.
Any public comment on this? I've seen none. All right. So we're now at ordinances on second reading, which would actually be ordinance 2023-16, appropriating the proceeds of the general obligation bond of 2023. Does Mike or Darla want to speak to this, or Jeff? I don't know.
I'll let Darla start.
The town council at an earlier meeting had passed the bond ordinance, which will allow the town to bond in order to, among other things, pay for the new utilities building, and the purpose of this ordinance is to allow the town to spend the money. So you can bond for it, but you can't spend the money. You can issue the bonds, but you can't spend the money until you pass the bond ordinance, so that's the purpose of this document.
And to be clear, this is to issue bonds to pay for a portion of the maintenance building and the other portions, this is a third of the cost, so the other two portions come from the water utility and the sewer.
Okay. All right. Any council discussion on this? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, moving to council action.
Move approval of ordinance 2023-18. I'm sorry, 2023-16, appropriating the proceeds of the general obligations bond of 2023.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pam Samples.
Yes.
And then Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Seeing no other ordinances on second reading. Do we have any flood report? We had some rain, but I didn't see any signs out.
Yeah, it wasn't enough rain to do anything. It did green up some of the grassy that's been sowed. I think I reported that we already inspected it and it's passed, and so we're going through a couple of change orders that were part of the final invoice that's coming our way. I think we, I think we had a really successful project. Kreider really did us a good job, and appreciate Adrian Miller for Chris for first help and Rick Cox for second.
Do you think we could move the flood report to maybe once a quarter now? Or would you still like to do it?
How about after the next big rain?
Okay, that's fair enough. Yeah, as Scott just said, as needed. All right. And Vision Ellisville update, is that you, Dan? Nothing, nothing this, all right? All right, old business, changes to rural transportation. I think we have some guests to speak on that tonight. Who would like to?
I'd like to point out that Chris Myers from Area 10 is on Zoom too.
Awesome. We'll let her speak also.
Hi, Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner. I'm joined by Trent Decker, Monroe County Council, and I would recommend that we start with Ms. Myers for the general explanation.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Myers, do you want to explain from your point of view what's going on?
Chris, kind of kicking through what you did with us last time was very important.
Hold on a second. We can't hear. No, she's not muted, is she?
No.
No. Give just a second. Chris, we're having some technical difficulties. Okay, well, we'll go back in session. It's.
I'm going to mute my Zoom so I can hear through the phone.
Dan, put your mic near their speaker, if you could. Yeah.
I think that'll probably feed back.
Okay, Chris, let's try it.
She muted her, so, Dan.
Can you hear me okay?
See, that's going to make it bad. Yes. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Did you turn your volume off on your computer?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, sorry for all of that. On my end, I was hoping to have you work okay. So I'm Chris Myers, I'm with Area 10, Agency on Aging, and we do the Rural Transit Public Transportation Program, services and past for decades in Monroe County, but also three other counties. And as you might be aware, or might not be aware, I also provided you with information, very detailed information about this particular situation in your package, so. But we have provided the public transportation services for non-urban areas in Monroe County for a long time, which also includes Ellisville, the town of Ellisville residents. Unfortunately, we also can only use those funds to provide those transportation trips to people who are going from the county to the city or city to county. And historically, that's what we've always done and didn't realize that we should not have actually gone within the urban area on both points of the trip all of this time. End dot has come down earlier this year and said that we can no longer do that. FPA, when they finally had a redefinition of their 2020 census boundary, said that they weren't going to allow any of that to happen anymore, and they knew that that was happening in urban areas. And End dot went through that situation with Indianapolis and the surrounding counties and their Indigo, which is their urban provider, and then Bloomington, the urban provider is Bloomington Transit, as you know. They get their funds directly from FPA and their urban grant fund for transportation. So we were told that beginning January 1st, we would no longer be able to provide transportation trips where both points, the pickup and drop-off are within the urbanized area. This is a very different direction than what we had been providing because we've been providing trips from outside the city to the city and by person because Bloomington said that hadn't provided that service outside of the city prior to now. But we have, you know, kind of alerted the county to this situation and had multiple conversations, and I think we had a couple of town of Ellisville representatives at those meetings earlier in July to talk about what are the next steps. So we're kind of at that point now. We're getting close to the end of the year, of course, and needing to know if there are any alternative solutions to continuing providing that service after January 1st. We have part of these people who, as you would expect, rely significantly on rural transit for that provision of service countywide, not just the Ellisville town, but what we found and what is in your package, you'll see a tight study of trips for the last 12 months and about 8,000 sixty here are within those urban-to-urban trips, and 60% of those have been pickup or drop-off in the town of Ellisville. Those were trips that were pulled by GPS coordinates, by the End dot consultants, so we didn't actually do any of that data, I know, because that was done by RLS and Associates, but they used our trip data from the dispatch software. So we're kind of at a point where we know that now Bloomington Transit has gotten legal authority from the city council to expand their boundary of services as they're optioned beyond the city of Bloomington, anywhere in the county. And we were waiting, I think, for final cost of what that might be for them to come out and provide that service. And it was just recently that they had a work session where they looked at some options, and I believe, you know, Jeff and Julie from the county attended that at kind of last minute that we were aware that that may be happening, where they were informed that one of the options was for Bloomington Transit to do some expansion of their BT access, which is their paratransit to some beyond the city to cover that urban area, and then looking at Lyft and Uber subcontract to the non-BT access eligible people, that the total cost would be about $312,000 estimated per meter based on those trips. And the cost of the service as they are estimating and not applying any of their 5311 urban grant funds towards the operation of that extended service. So the county had asked me to ask if there was possible option for running a parallel service for transportation, and I consulted with End dot to see if that was the case. And because we can't use our 5311 non-urban grant funds for any of those trips, it would also have to be full cost, which based on the last operational year, you know, I think I gave you all of that would be about $27.41 per trip, and that comes out to, that's kind of eight thousand trips, about $220,000 a year over the course of a full year, if that were everything really full. So I believe we're at a state where the county was wanting to have a foundation with the town of Ellisville to see, you know, if you are willing and able to help provide some funding to at least provide transportation continuity of service after January through rural transit and often. So I'm happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of details there, because I know it's complicated.
Thank you. All right. Do you, first of all, does the council have any questions for Chris before we move on to Commissioner Thomas? All right, Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, so to start with, among the options that Bloomington Transit put on the table, these were informal discussions. The cheapest option was $312,000 a year estimate for both the county and Ellisville together. What Ms. Myers has put together is a $220,000 a year budget, and with the 60-40 split, 60% would go to Ellisville, $132,000 for the year and $88,000 for the county. This would be billed monthly after the month has passed, so it would be based on actual ridership. So those numbers may flux. But the good news is for residents of the county and Ellisville, the town of Ellisville, is that this would be seamless. They would get a rural transit service, rural transit bus, door-to-door effort, the same as before. They wouldn't know how we're managing this, and I think that's a real benefit as well. So we talked about pursuing this as an option. We wanted to get your feedback on it. I don't know if Counselor Decker has anything to add.
I just want to thank you all for having us in this evening. This obviously, the only thing I'll add to this, this obviously is not a choice or a thing any of us would pick, do have to manage or deal with, but the reality is, is that we are going to have a mess come January 1st if we don't step into our roles as public officials and do our duty. When I, from a county council fiscal perspective, and I have the privilege of representing people on both sides of the borders of this town, when I look at this and I look at the two different options, I don't want to disparage Bloomington Transit's option, but it costs more, number one. Number two, the thing that concerns me is anything that stops on December 31st with one service provider and starts on January 1st with a new service provider makes me nervous about it being consistent for a person that needs it to be consistent. I also want to reiterate, county's not made this decision. This is coming from End dot. I don't want to question their wisdom, but this is what they've given us, and we do have some options. And so from a county perspective, we are now, as the fiscal body, figuring out for our portion with the $88,000 estimate where that's going to come from, we're looking at sources now. In fact, I just, the reason I'm late is I left a meeting where we were doing that. Commissioners also were present with us, and so we're like you, we're figuring this out, but know that it is what it is come January 1st, and it's pretty grave, depending on what we do or do not do. So again, thanks for having us in this evening.
I do think from talking to council members and other supervisors, we, I mean, I think it's crucial to make this almost seamless for the riders because a lot of them are elderly, they may be on their own, and if all of a sudden they have different numbers to call, different drivers, different pickups, I just cannot imagine the hardship. We just have to figure out how. Mike, did you want to?
Well, yeah. I have some questions. I ask Chris, and Chris, just chime in anytime you want, but I'm curious why we are leaving Bloomington out of what we might want to do, considering that they've been part of this in the past. As I understand, they receive funds based on the entire county, and they have the ability to collaborate and maybe transfer funds back to us. In fact, the perfect resolve would have been that they would have contracted with rural transit and not in like Indianapolis area funded the project. And so I think they have had those funds for, I don't know how many years this has been going on, but quite a few, and they've utilized them for Bloomington Transit in the past. And so I think that we definitely need to ask Bloomington Transit if they're willing to collaborate. I mean, it's, you know, it's part of the business that at hand is to find out where we can receive funds and how we can utilize them to help.
Especially if they're the funds provider for the urbanized area. They get the federal funds for that, correct?
Yeah, so Bloomington Transit gets 5307 funding, which is different from what rural transit receives, which is through the USDA, and it's called 5311 funding. Those two cannot mix. That's why this would be sort of a separate system, but it would be using, the good news is, we utilized, we created with ARPA funds, we helped fund the purchase of electric buses, and since those were not purchased with USDA dollars, they can be used for this shadow service. So that's the good news. I agree with you in principle that indeed the city of Bloomington should be paying us back part of their 5307 funding. We're not going to resolve that before the end of the year, and it doesn't mean we can't pursue it into 2024 because certainly we can, and I'd be happy to do that. But the fact is, there's a new administration coming in, and we don't know what's going to transpire. We, our biggest concern is making sure that we have service January 1st, 12:01 a.m., although it will be a 12:01 a.m., but on January 1st that we have service. The other thing is, to be fair, to be fair, city of Bloomington taxpayers pay on their property taxes toward Bloomington Transit. County taxpayers outside the city of Bloomington do not. So there is some balancing act that has to go on in terms of funding, but that's why I think all of their funding options were so expensive. They were trying to accommodate for that and the fact that they're putting some local income tax dollars into transit capital purchases as well, and they're trying to balance that out. And so, yeah, this isn't to disparage Bloomington Transit, it's just to say we are where we are, and we hope to have a decision very soon that we can take back, the county council meets tomorrow night, and it would be really useful to have some feedback on where you think this is going to go for the town of Ellisville.
I can say from, we don't want any, we're not going to leave our residents hanging. I mean, that's, I think we're all in agreement there. We just have to figure out where to get the money from. And the fact is, you know, we've, our budget was pretty much fully allocated, I'm sure as yours was too. And so now we're all scrambling to, any other council comments on this because this is, I mean, this is like 11th hour, but nobody is at fault here. It's just a circumstance of what happens, and we've got to deal with it, but, and I agree with Commissioner Thomas, I think talked with this Mike too, is that we need to do something for this year, and then long-term, we can figure out the nuts and bolts, Bloomington and all these other pieces. But right now, with the little, what, I think you have two meetings?
Yeah, about.
Yeah, we have two, we have after this one, two meetings.
Well, we do have two more meetings, but the second one will be in between Christmas and New Year's, like all the times you can.
Right.
Would this be worth a work session for you, Mike?
Well, it could be. I mean, we could have it right now.
And so the county, what sources are you guys looking at to pull that gap?
Our initial discussion this evening that I'm pushing towards myself is ARPA dollars. I don't know what your present condition is on that one, but ours is those are, that bucket's getting really empty quick because our need is, seems like every 30 seconds I get something else. Has a need there, including this. So I think for one year, that is kind of where I hear talk heading in that way. It might change in 24 hours because we meet tomorrow night.
Understand. I, right now, I think in talking to Mike, we're, we did a big flood remediation.
Right.
And that's, I mean, we may have done something different if we knew this was on the horizon, but we're here where we are. It's bills that are paid, but.
Well, we were obligated to have an ARPA plan, so that plan will amount every dollar that we have, and we made some commitments to matching funds for a couple of grants that we got. So I do not know that they're, I think we're in the minus, which we're just going to talk about later. And, but, no, I'm curious. I think we are in the minus when it comes to the ARPA dollars we have, so we've pretty much depleted our source there. I don't know where we're going to get it. One of the questions that I asked Chris, and I think somebody's going to go home and think about it, so I'm just going to put it out there. I'm interested in knowing why, because I asked Chris where's all the money come from, and apparently in the past for Area 10, it comes from Putnam County, Owen County, Spencer, a couple other places, and I'm curious why the town of Ellisville, not that I'm mad that we've been left out, but why we have not been part of this in the past?
The rural transit funding is part of our county budget, which includes obviously Ellisville and Bloomington. So we annually spend dollars, county taxpayer dollars, towards support of rural transit, and sometimes that amount is higher when we're providing a bus or part of a bus. So I think I would just be grateful that you hadn't been asked, although we're happy to come to you with that next year.
No, no, I knew what I said.
Happy to come back. I think the ironic thing here, just to throw some irony into all of this that you all appreciate, is that Area 10 itself is in one of these densely populated areas and could not be serviced by rural transit unless we do something, and that's pretty sobering.
One thing, and I may have this number wrong, so Chris, if I do correct me on here, I was looking at our ARPA allocations, and I think for the electric buses that were mentioned earlier that we did, we did about a half million dollars in those from our ARPA funds. Good news is, it would fit this. We didn't know when we did it, we just did it because it was one of the requests that we had, but, so our, our, providing that hopefully will help mitigate this a little bit more than, because I guess we could not use the other buses.
Right, right.
If I have.
Right.
So with this, if we do contract with rural transit, they can only use those two electric buses, is that? Is that?
There are, there are more than two.
Okay.
Five. Five. The first industry that would be part of the funds that are all 100% local funded, and we would have to use those vehicles in order to do this parallel service.
And would that still maintain the level of service? Will we still be able to meet the needs of our?
Yes.
Okay.
It would, yes.
So Chris, this is Michael Farber again. So another question I have, just so everybody can be thinking about this. I'm assuming, one of the questions I have is when they determined Ellisville's ridership, is it Ellisville's urbanized area, kind of like Bloomington? Like for instance, we wrote the Walmart in Bloomington is considered a Bloomington urbanized area. Is that correct? So is it urbanized areas of Ellisville, or is it just?
It's defined area of the town of Ellisville, whatever the coordinates of that are. It's like I said, that was done by the INDOT, people, where they had all the GCF coordinates that they could do that around determine.
Okay, and I think I knew that, but I just wanted to ask it. And then the other question is, should we assume the county and the town that if we can figure something out that in the future, as the town of Ellisville grows, are probably our amount we need to pay over grow as well?
It may be, it may be.
Somebody else answered that, I didn't hear all the questions.
Yeah, his question is about whether that percentage that Ellisville would have to pay in the future would grow. And I would just reiterate that this is going to be billed out based on actual ridership month to month. So we'll know what the trend is month to month as we go on. And it is indeed the legal boundaries of Ellisville that are being used.
I just want to add.
The answer to that, Mike, I think is no. That it's not going, it's going, it's trip dependent. It's not population dependent.
Right. And then the county.
If you want.
What's not inside the county?
I'll comment.
Go for that. Any other, any council questions, discussions?
I guess my question to this, Mike, is what's the ridership fee per trip?
$15?
Yeah, do they pay anything at all per trip?
$3 each way.
So the $27 is on top of, so it's really $30 per trip?
So the way it would work is that if the actual cost would be, you know, if you multiply that out, it would be the $27 per trip. But if there is a $3 trip you pay, so it'd be $24 technically. It would come through off the top, yeah.
And do either of you know if BT Transit, they charge a trip fee also similar to that, or?
I don't know the amount, but they do.
Okay, all right. Probably be, I mean, fairly similar. Dan, I think you had something?
Well, actually Scott asked the question I had too. And just to add on to that, when's the last time that that was raised? When?
The trip fee.
The trip fee.
The trip fee was raised last in 2018. And I'll tell you this, that the reason that we don't increase that fee, at least on the grant side, on the regular operation side, is that that actually comes off the top. So the grant, it doesn't help with your federal match at all. It doesn't help towards your local match. It just reduces your net expense. So the way those grant funds work is if you've got the total expenses minus your fares, minus your in-kind, and then it's 50%, up to 50% of that that the federal grant will pay for. So the actual fares don't help anything towards your local match. It just shifts the burden of the actual cost onto the riders.
But that would make a difference if we're contracting without any federal matching grants, correct?
It would, yes.
I think that's something that may be in the back of our heads for the future. I just don't know if this, just springing on people like that would be.
What would be feasible for them or not?
Right, yeah. I don't, I don't want anybody to be priced out, or, I mean, this is a crucial service for people because, I mean, point blank, if some people don't get this service, they may not be able to go to the doctors, may not be able to get food. I mean, the ones that most need it, need it. And I don't think anybody usually uses it for just a luxury trip. It's, they have no one else, and we're it. And I mean, is that kind of, I'm seeing nods. I think most people would agree. Do you have anything else you want to add, either?
No, just thank you.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate you guys coming here and taking the time out.
And now invite any public that want to comment on this issue.
I just have a question. Knowing about the buses will be coming from Bloomington Transit, are they the ones then who are responsible for all the servicing and upkeep? Or could that be additional costs when those break down? Especially knowing what I know about the electric buses. Just how is that, is that a cost for them?
Well, the option, I think the county and we are leaning towards would just be contracting with Rural Transit, so they wouldn't be coming from Bloomington.
Okay, so who's servicing the buses? Then we're.
Then that would be Area 10, correct?
Okay, the same way?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I had a, Jim Perry, I had a question. You see a lot of promotion these days about Medicare Advantage plans, right? And there's also dual Medicaid, Medicare, I think, trip reimbursement. And so that, and that's built into some of the Medicare Advantage. And I'm wondering whether the $3 that's now received from the recipient might be reimbursable at a higher rate if this person is both on Medicaid and Medicare and has, let's say, a Medicare Advantage plan. That may, there may be other ways of getting reimbursement to sort of reduce the total dollar outlays.
Chris, do you know if that's the case? Did you hear the question?
I think that has something to do with Medicare Advantage plans and paying for transportation.
Yes.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I am uncertain how we would incorporate that without having separate contracts with every potential Medicare Advantage plan. So I really don't know logistically. I know it wouldn't be something that would be an option for January 1st.
One state, one Medicare plan, one Medicaid. It could be if it's reimbursable.
We already are a Medicaid provider, and those trips, if they are non-emergency medical transportation, they only, you know, they pay for that entire cost, but.
The general point is they're looking at other sources for reimbursement and also the reduction of the total outlays.
I do think the problem we're running into is that the time to look into all these other methods were pretty limited. And one question was just asked to me, Chris, do you know about how many of the trips are non-essential Medicaid? Were they have paid full reimbursement? Or is that not factored into this, or is it?
That's above and beyond. The costs, these trips are actually more non, they're not the Medicaid trip.
Okay. All right. Anybody else want to weigh in on anything?
Well, I'm going to assume that you'll want to report from us, and I need to get with Noel and Stan and Amber and.
We need to start shaking our, going through our seat cushions and seeing what money we can find, if any.
Well, we do, but I will say we have a meeting with BT this Friday, and I intend to start there. Because if you don't ask.
Right.
And I'm not interested in anybody saying we can't do this or can't do that. I think we need to find out how we can do this, so.
I do think from what I'm hearing, though, even if BT Transit does give us some of those funds, again, correct me if I'm wrong and misinterpreted this, it would still, we would still have to come up with some money because it's not a one-to-one.
That's right.
I'm seeing that we're going to.
Would be that BT 5311, 5307 funds could be proportionally applied to this expanded service. So for instance, you know, there are 312,000 estimation. If they use the 5307 funds to help with that, that would be, you know, half of those costs. And then the rest of those costs would need to still be supported by some other local source.
So we're really looking at probably a Plan A to make sure we don't have a gap, and maybe a Plan B for how we're going to proceed in the future, and maybe even a Plan C that says what's going to happen in 2025. So I mean, there's going to have to be a lot of collaboration. And I would really like to think that, you know, city of Bloomington would like to collaborate with us and the county on this, if ever there was a good reason to be together. So I guess we'll get started in what he suggests. We come back at the next meeting and make a decision. I don't want, I do not think it's a good idea to wait till the last meeting.
No, we don't want to wait till the last meeting. Too many things can happen. Chris, I have one other question. Is there anything preventing private contributions to cover this?
Absolutely not. We actually have done fundraisings and gotten donations to try and help source some of the local match and, you know.
What about if a business wanted to sponsor their logo or something?
I'm not completely convinced that it's a gift to the local income tax that supports city of Bloomington for their local match. We don't get that.
Right.
We piece it together with county and town, general fund and EDIT fund. And then we have, you know, the Medicaid and, you know, contacts with Stone Belt and ARC and Sweetone Industries. We've done fundraisers at Babs and Spencer. So, yeah, any contributions can come in. They're not solid, you know?
Right.
Not something you can count on, but in the immediate, yes.
What about them putting their, their company information on the Rural Transit buses we could use? So if somebody says, look, I'll underwrite it, but you're going to advertise for me?
So there are ads that can be done. There's a cost to that. We only get the net of that. So and then it's an unrelated business tax, so we have to actually pay the tax on that income. Very little of that actually comes through as revenue to support the operations. In fact, I think this current year, we're only probably about $6,500, and then we have to pay taxes on it.
Wow, so if someone said, look, put my stuff on it, I'll give you $150,000, that we're not, you're not going to see that $150,000?
I'm not going to see that $150,000, no.
Okay. Wow.
So is the contract we have to sign with Rural Transit, is that month to month? Or is that a year, it's paid monthly?
I didn't hear that question, if that was for me.
It was. So if we decide to go with Rural Transit, are we doing month to month? Or is it a year-long contract that is billed monthly?
Yeah, we could do month-to-month billing. So just like Dewey had explained, you know, we keep track of those trips. And then just like any other service contract that we have, we would bill at the end of the month with the actual trips that were provided during that month.
Okay.
And we were just trying to give annualized number for the scope.
Sure, no, I get it. I'm just trying to, I guess, work out how we would buy time until we figure out a long-term plan, whether that be contracting with you month to month, rather than getting ourselves into a year-long.
That's right. I just care about people getting the services.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
To have. So anything we can do to help along that end is something we're willing to consider.
So what I'm hearing, the consensus of the council is we're definitely going to do something. We're not going to let these people be without service.
Right, just need to figure out.
But we just need to figure out how.
Yep.
Right, so if you could get us numbers, I mean.
I think that they have, haven't they?
You already have, haven't you? Yes, where, I mean, at least for the first few months, we're going to, I don't see any way around this.
Money from.
So we got to figure out where we're going to take it from and.
Our budget's, like he said, fully allocated. The only, only way you have is in your operating balance. Once you start bleeding that down, you get yourself in trouble. So I.
Well, you'll also have an estimate here in a couple of weeks as to how much reversion funds you're going to have back from the departments for the year.
Yes, and it's looking a little bleak this year.
It very well may, but a dollar's a dollar.
Yes.
All right, so let's, by the next council meeting, we have to make a decision. Are we all kind of in agreement with that? Because if, if something happens at the end of the year and we can't do it, somebody, you know, a lot of things can happen during holidays. That would be.
Well, my question is too, when do we have to get with Rural Transit? And tell them, yes, we're going to do this, or no, or whatever? I mean, how quickly do they need an answer? Do you guys know that?
Seems for Chris.
For us, you know, we, I would like to have the answer before the end of December. I mean, preferably mid-December at the latest.
And that fits with our next meeting.
Yeah.
I also feel like, you know, the riders, I can't, I think we have one rider on tonight. I don't know if he wants to speak at all, but, you know, it causes a lot of anxiety for people. I've taken phone calls from individuals. So the sooner that I can actually get any kind of answer to people to let them know that there is some kind of continuity of service, obviously, the better for them as well.
Okay.
I don't know when your next meeting is.
It's the 11th.
December 11th. Right at the mid-December deadline that you would prefer. I mean, I'd love to say we could take action tonight, but it would be unfunded action, so it would.
Not responsible.
Yeah, I mean, I, we really can't. And I think our county counterparts can, I mean, we have been having this conversation about where to get money from. It just, gosh. All right, I hate to leave it on a big question mark, but I guess you can reassure riders, they will be taken care of. We just have to figure out how. Anybody else want any more comments on this? You guys want to?
We'll try to have the information by the end.
Yeah. Mr. Perry, do you want to say something else?
Well, I know. The state of Indiana has a rainy day fund. Question is, what's the town of Ellisville's?
It's been rained on.
I mean, do you, is that? There is a rainy day fund. We just have to see if we can apply other mechanisms before we get to that.
Right, that's a, that's a last resort.
And what's the reserve?
About $240,000, I think.
I mean, this sort of raises the question of perhaps be more vigilant and diligent about rainy day funds for future use if these things pop up. Well, let me answer that a little bit. We have been very diligent about it, but there's only certain amount of times you can add to the rainy day fund, and there's only certain categories you can't. That rainy day fund has doubled probably in the last four or five years. So we've been very diligent, living within our means and putting money away. So to characterize it as we haven't been is unfair. So simply to say, we will look for funds somewhere to try and fund this, the rainy day fund being the last resort, as you've been told. How much of your revenue comes out of non-tax, non-property tax? Well, not a whole lot, because there's just not a whole lot of user fees to do otherwise. This year's budget includes what amount of money from non-property tax sources?
There's quite a bit. We get miscellaneous revenue. We have a lot of miscellaneous revenue. But for me to repeat that without paperwork in front of me is impossible. I just.
I mean, the only, the issue I raised, and I asked for the, that document wasn't provided with the budget document this year, but I sort of requested that, and I've looked at it since the last council meeting. And if I were looking to grow the rainy day fund and prepare for situations like this, I would be looking more diligently and carefully at that. And that wasn't even on the, in the budget document this year, partly because I guess you use the.
The only way we can put in the rainy day fund is at the end of our fiscal year, if we have enough money that is in our budget that's unspent, then the council can make a. a transfer once a year. It's not in, it's not an allocated fund and it's not in the miscellaneous revenue or our budgets. It's just a standalone savings account that we can add to once a year.
The question though is, how do you sort of, uh, what volume of miscellaneous revenues are you seeking?
I, I don't think.
Are they at all flexible? I mean, that's, that's a policy question for the future, but I, I think it's an important one, particularly in light of the issues raised by this particular situation.
At the end of the night, if Pat doesn't want to succeed out there, I mean, it's money and whether you call it one thing or the other, we just need to find money. So the fact that the rainy day fund doesn't have any more interest than it does, which is a considerable amount, I think it's a moot point about.
But it is a place to look for the monies in the, in a, on a short notice.
Most of our miscellaneous revenues are revenues that have a purpose.
Right.
Like our fire contract. The township pays us every year to do fire protection. That miscellaneous revenue is already allocated. We, we have building permits and, and, you know, that type of thing. That helps to partially fund our planning department. So, I mean, the, the miscellaneous revenues that we get from the state, um, are all allocated by our road mileage and, and our population, and they all support certain funds.
Right. We don't get any that just here.
Yeah, there's not like an excess that we say we're going to get all this miscellaneous revenue in. How do we want to spend this new revenue in the new coming year? We have to combine that with our tax dollars just to meet our demands. And our budgets are 75 to 85% personnel. So we're talking about our operating budgets for the town are 15 to 25% per department. It gets pretty slim sometimes. So, yeah, it, it's going to be a process. I'm not saying it's, uh, unobtainable, but the only way, I tell you right now, if you want to start paying that in January, is to use operating balance. We'll have to do an additional appropriation, which will take, you know, about six weeks after the year starts. And then you'll have a year to figure out where that money's going to come from. But even our levy increases, they don't even cover personnel, uh, cost of living increases or slight raises. Not, you know, we can go on.
Right.
Forever on the expenses and how it's so hard to be.
The county has the same, same issues.
Yeah, it's just really hard to meet our obligations without having a surplus of funds. And it's, this is just something new and we're going to have to.
It really is unprecedented, but we know about it now going forward and all of us, you know, city, Bloomington, town of Ellisville, county, um, can work to get this. Cause we're all, I think we're all on the same page. It needs, we need to happen. We just got to figure it, figure it out how. So, alright, moving on. Any new business? Seeing none? Privilege of the floor. Anybody that hasn't spoken or wants to add anything that's been not on the agenda, they're welcome to. Seeing none? Supervisor comments?
I have nothing.
Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Only thing I have, I'd like you to look at the wall over here. We have a AED that is installed near the last week or so. Training was done here.
On the twen, the 20th, Monday before Thanksgiving.
This was a grant through Smithville Telephone Company. So I'd like to give a shout out to Darby and Cullen for keeping us interested in, in getting those grants. So it's, uh,
Fantastic.
Really, really good for the town. So, and our, most, most of our cars have AEDs now or have access to one, so.
Jeff?
I'd better not.
Okay. Kevin? Kip?
Just got a couple of things. Uh, as you're aware, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, well, actually more than a couple of weeks ago, we, I was approached for asking help to help the RBB store, uh, with their move. And a couple of weeks ago, on the 14th, we went down there to move two buildings. And I guess I didn't realize how big the bigger building was. And thankfully, we got ahold of, uh, Blans Wrecker Service and Blans came at no cost to help the town, to help RBB store to move the bigger building. So.
Wow.
Uh, big thank you to Blans Wrecker Service and Chad Stevens with Blans Wrecker Service. And, uh, uh, we got, got that, got that accomplished. Uh.
Make note that they have it in home, please.
Yes, uh, they're new, I should look at the address, but they're, they're up there in the Smith Pike Crossing up there.
With pantry 279 now, on opposite.
Yes, it's right down from 279 is where they're at. So they're up there and they are open now. And I think they are taking donations now as well. So they're fully going, so.
And they have a drop off back?
And in the back.
Out, out the back. So you have to go back behind the complex proper and, and they, they have their two bars back there.
And to give you an idea, how many, how many people in the county are in need, their website crashed three times today when people signed up for the elf deliveries.
Oh, really?
Gifts, yeah.
Wow.
So they've worked through that, but I mean, sometimes we, we don't realize how much people have to rely on these services. And that's a sobering thought when.
Also, uh, before the next council meeting, uh, there's going to be an event downtown Santa on Cell Street, um, with the street, the fire, the police. We all kind of work together on closing down the street and get it ready. So it's, uh, December 9th from nine to 12 downtown. Uh, I think there's a lot of other, I think the Masonic Lodge is involved as well. I think they have a breakfast starting at eight o'clock.
Yeah, biscuits and gravy, I believe.
Something like that. Um, then on the final note, um, we're still picking up leaves. It's starting to slow down. So we're, we've finally caught up, catching our breath.
You don't rake them too, do you?
Uh, no.
Darn it, okay.
They just pick them up right along the other street. So, um, probably got a couple more weeks, probably sometime between the, the week of the 11th and the 15th, we'll be done picking them up. And we ask residents, put them in a biodegradable bag and we'll come and pick the bags up after that. So.
Awesome.
That's all I've got.
Thank you. Denise?
Um, you've probably noticed some work has been going on at the log cabin and, um, we needed two logs desperately. Um, so we reached out to, Mike in my office, reached out to everybody. We were calling Green Castle and everywhere and Barty Builders, the developers of Charlestown Manor came through, went to Oden, picked up the logs and delivered them to the cabin for us. And they, one goes under the front door and then one, um, in the back. We had to have that before we could finish our foundation and, uh, cause the logs were rotten that were on it. And then also Department of Public Works, um, um, we had builder do the foundation. Department of Public Works did the backfill and everything. It looks wonderful. So we're making progress. I wanted to let you know.
Fantastic. When do we think we'll have, be able to have it open to the public next spring, summer?
Yeah, I'm shooting for early spring because then we'll have some other projects we need to start working on. And so after January, I'm going to meet with a builder to see where their prices are at now as compared to when I wrote my grant.
Okay.
To see if I need to request bids or if I can just get quotes.
Alright. Sandy?
I don't have anything.
Alright, anything from the council? Seeing none? Call this meeting adjourned.